I'm gonna bring this meeting to order. Rocco?
McKnight?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Rowa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Kinder?
Here.
And now I'm gonna ask the ladies to lead us in the subject ladies. I guess I could've introduced them. We've got some, um, what troop are you guys? Oh, 53304? Girl Scouts. So I guess I could've introduced them first, right? Straight on the spot. All right, um, do we have public comments?
No, Your Honor.
Notice of executive session?
No executive session has been held.
Approval of minutes, February 16th, 2022, council meeting? Second. Discussion? Rocco?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Communications?
Uh, Your Honor, we did not receive any communications.
Um, managers' report, Mary Ann?
Thank you, Your Honor. So the first item under a manager's report is going to be a discussion and presentation by Gary Johnson about the city's new proposed zoning ordinance.
All right, everyone, um, I promise it won't be too long. I mean, as exciting as zoning is, you can only take so much at a time, so I'm not gonna try to take too much time with you. So just a quick update, that was a joke, I guess. That was bad, too, so I guess no one laughed. All right, well, so... I'm not gonna do that anymore. Thank you. I'm gonna talk to her. So just some background, I apologize, it's a little bit wordy in places. Um, so in 1994 was the last major update to our zoning ordinance. Over the years, there's been several minor adjustments here and there as necessary, but this is the first comprehensive update we've had in a long time. I can't do the math, I was a history major, so can't do the math to 94. So in 2018, you'll remember My Meadville, um, that we've, we've gone through a few years back, the grassroots planning effort. Um, in 2018, that actually was awarded the, the state planning award, and the state, um, encouraged us to take a look at our zoning to see if we could bring it more into compliance with the vision enshrined in the My Meadville. So as part of that, we received a grant to help pay for half the funding. We hired environmental planning and design out of Pittsburgh, which is a professional planning organization that helped us go through that, um, and work began in late, late 2018. Um, over the next two years or so, the Seven Year, Seven Member Planning and Zoning Commission worked with county staff, uh, set the representation from Meadville, uh, My Meadville, uh, putting this ordinance together. We actually finalized it almost a year ago, uh, but we've just been waiting, um, for the right time to bring it to council so they can, it can be, um, study on it. So what is zoning? Zoning is basically, it's a division of a community into districts in which different regulations apply. And, and traditional zoning, such as what we have, it talks about setbacks, how far do buildings need to be from, from property lines, it says how large can they be, how many dwelling units can you have apart, on a parcel? Lighting, signage, et cetera, et cetera. Talks about all these things. So that's really what, at its most basic zoning, that's what that is. At the state level, it's governed by what's called the municipality's planning code, so whatever we do has to be in accordance with that state law. You'll see on the screen in council, I apologize, but you, you do have these presentations in front of you. On the right on the screens, there is the proposed zoning. Uh, it's a little bit hard to see, and we'll get into all of this in more detail at future meetings, but that's, that's what the draft, um, map looks like. So real quick, again, just as a very basic intro to zoning, some, some basic terms we have, permitted use by right, that's something that I can approve, so in a single-family residential district, a single-family residence is permitted, I can permit that under the ordinance. A special exception is something that's permitted use, subject to conditions, special conditions that are applied, as well as a hearing before what's called the zoning hearing board, which is just an independent body appointed by council that hears these. Conditional use is largely the same type of use, except it goes before the planning commission for review, and then actual hearing before council instead of the zoning hearing board. Uh, a variance is basically asking for permission not to follow the strict rules of the zoning ordinance due to some particular hardship that has to do with the property. So there has to be something specific to them, not just because they don't want to meet the requirements of the ordinance. All of these will come into play as we talk more about the zoning ordinance and how it's enforced, uh, but I wanted to go over some of these. So the next four, next three terms are going to be new to most of us here, because this, the idea with this zoning ordinance is to change certain parts of, of, of town to what's called a form-based zoning, um, regime, if you will. So you have form-based zoning, it's basically, it's focused more on the structure, what things look like, as opposed to how they're used. Um, and I'll get into that in, in just a second. Um, street typology talks about what type of street you have, so you have Park Avenue is basically a collector's street and an, almost an arterial street, as opposed to Pine, which is more of a neighborhood street. Smaller, narrower, has a different function. It really goes through neighborhoods, serves to, serves lots where an arterial, or a collector serves to take you through town or through neighborhoods. So that comes into play when you're talking about form-based zoning. And then lastly, building typology talks about, um, about what buildings look like and where they're placed on the lots. So that's, and that's another one that comes into play with this, with this form-based zoning that we're gonna be talking about. What's that?
She knows what buildings look like.
Oh, you do? Okay, well, this will, this will talk about what... Yes, colors, yes. We don't govern colors. Not yet. So we're gonna... So talking about mixed use in the, in the, in the form-based areas, it's really gonna be in the mixed use, and you can see on the screen and in your packets, the areas that basically have color on them are proposed to be those mixed-use areas where the form-based regulations would apply. Um, they're largely, um, downtown, mainly downtown and in older areas of town, essentially, where you have them all built out and it's an older feel. Couple of slides real quick on what those, on what form-based means. One of the reasons we did, we wanna go in this direction is My Meadville found that a substantial number of those residents that participated liked the feel of their neighborhoods. They said, "I, I like where the houses are set, I like what they look like, I like their proximity to each other, I like the sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera." And so the idea behind the form-based is to try to knit together what those neighborhoods are, and say, if you're going to demolish or rebuild or renovate, it needs to look like that, it needs to continue to look like that to try to preserve the historic feel of it. So that's really what the form-based zoning in the older parts of town, that, that's the intent of that, that's the idea behind it. So the standards regulates, um, building typology, what they look like, and also how they're oriented to a street. And so you'll see on the right there, on your screen, on the screen there, is just a basic slide of what a single-family residence would need to look like in those areas. So if you're going to build a new one or add to it, it needs to have, quote, for example, a sloped roof, um, the siding needs to be horizontal, it would not permit stucco or concrete as a siding option. It really is basically taking what's there, you need to make it look like that in those areas. That's, that's really what the building typology part of it comes, comes to. And in exchange for that, essentially, it allows more uses. So you'll see the last bullet point there on the left that talks about more uses, more neighborhood-scale uses in some of those areas. Um, to be clear, the single, the existing single-family residential R1 districts are not proposed to change. Those would be staying the same. This wouldn't apply, again, as you would've seen on the screen, in the lot, a lot of the northern area town, the plateau area, that's really not proposed to change. But in those mixed-use areas that allow those, like, small coffee shops, laundries, um, talking dry cleaners, green growths, or some of those smaller uses, um, as long as they occupy a building that looks like the other buildings in, in there, generally you can do that. We do have regulations, for example, on lighting, parking, hours of operation, signage, things like that, to limit the impact, but it allows a reuse of some of these older buildings, especially some of these larger house, older houses that just don't make sense anymore for some people. Um, it allows conversion of those types of houses that may not be economical for family use into a commercial use that may be able to support the costs that are related to that. Is there a question? Is there any question? So from a site standpoint, we talked about street typology, it takes into account, account what type of street you're sitting on. So essentially, if you're on a corner street, you're a corner, um, you might have a collector's street, and you might have a, a neighborhood street. What this says is basically the house or the building has to face the more, the busier street, okay? So you, you preserve that feel as you go through town, the buildings are still facing, facing that main street, and then access would actually be off the minor street to help prevent, um, I mean collisions, it's a traffic safety issue, you have it on the more minor street with less traffic, to get access driveways into those, into those parcels. That's the main idea of, of, of the site, um, the site governing in, in, in form-based zoning. The other major one I wanna mention is traditional setbacks for buildings from property lines are minimums. It has to be at least this far from a property line. In the form-based zoning, it basically says, you really need to meet the setbacks of the other buildings that are already on that, on that block. So if you take a block of buildings and they're all roughly the same, you need to fit into that. You can't go back farther, you can't go back closer. You need to be roughly where the same, there's some allowance, but roughly the same, so again, you perceive, pursue, preserve that feel as you're going through the neighborhood. I saw that, Mary Ann. So that's the, that's the idea, that's the other main idea, it's building typology and street typology, and we'll get into that more in a future meeting, but I just wanted to introduce it to you so you can, it can start germinating in, in your mind. So again, from, from an amendment process, council will discuss this. It'll discuss it as, as long as it needs to, as long as council needs to, as long as you're comfortable with it. I, I fully assume that changes will be made by council to the draft. Um, but as we go through this over the spring and the summer, um, this is the process, I'm not gonna go through this, but this is prescribed by law, this is how we have to do it, you'll have that in front of you here. And this is just the proposed timeline, I fully expect, again, this to change as well, but to give it time, I wanna talk about different sections of the ordinance, a different meeting, so we can focus on certain, certain sections as we move forward, so you can fully understand it. Uh, we do intend to have public outreach sessions, uh, just at the, at the end of when council is fully introduced to it. So then we'll go out to the public for a month or two, come back with public comments to council, saying, "These are some of the things we've heard, what do you think?" And then we go through the process. In this, theoretically, the ordinance would be effective October 11th. So you can see that it's, a lot of time is built into this because it's a big change, it's gonna have a lot of impact, it's a fundamental change in some areas of town on how we administer zoning. That's what I got. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns or thoughts at the moment, but we will go back to you with several more presentations like that that will delve into more detail.
Thank you for all of this information and starting from the beginning, right? I always appreciate that.
And you do have the ordinance as well, that's the bigger, thicker, monstrous piece of, the book that you have there, exactly.
This is really great. Um, I think, like, I guess the request I'll make is, like, at the end of each, like, if we wanna stick with this, like, can you just, like, tell us what we should review for the next one, right? So rather than just having it with our clinical packet for, like, a couple days, you've got, like, the two weeks or whatever.
Yep.
And, and will planning commission members be part, like, will they bring it at all, or is this, you know, you will kind of be responsible for the...
I'll be responsible if, make sure someone wants to come in and talk about certain sections of it, he could, he'll do that, but I think it is the, I would be the point on it, to, to talk to council. Unless council wants to look at someone else's talk, or listen to someone else's talk, that totally would be that, too. A lot better jokes.
I, I think if it would, like, lighten the load or help, but I also recognize that sometimes, uh, delegating is just as much work as not, so.
Potentially. Thank you.
What do you think is, like, what's the overall purpose? Like, why, why this? That, I'm just, like, how would you say, is it to keep the feel of me know, like?
In those areas, yeah, the idea is that in the older neighborhoods that are established like that, in the multi, in the, in the multifamily areas and the transitional areas, is to try to really keep that, that feel together, and this would, would allow reuse, more reuse, from a use standpoint, allows more uses of those types of buildings. So it probably would preserve them longer, as opposed to saying, someone saying, "I just can't afford this thing," and they walk away, or they demolish it and wanna rebuild something else. This would preserve that feel that people said that they wanted to see through that My Meadville process.
And then there's already probably places that are, like, well, that doesn't fit, or just, that's okay, right? And I was thinking about, like, I guess I was...
Buildings that already are, like, if they've already, you know, that they're already theirs.
Yeah, exactly. They're just there.
Exactly.
They're not gonna conform to that look, but to some other look that we figure out.
Right, and any, any existing building is, is, is what it is. We can tell someone to knock their building down and move it. So if it's there, it's there. Yeah, and so if this is, idea behind this is, as we move forward, if, if a non-conforming building like that goes away, then the new building would need to conform with this and be, be moved or look different or whatever. That's what that would do. Yep.
I feel like a way that's been helpful for me to think about it is, like, like, you mentioned Park Avenue, and maybe it's not necessarily like this because it is, like, uh, you said, arterial or connector, but like, there's like a, a whole string of buildings, like, you, you're walking from Chestnut, you're walking down Park, there's a whole string of buildings where, like, the, maybe the parking lot is right in front, right, and it sits really back. There's like Wendy's, there's the dialysis, right, there's like a whole string of things that, like, uh, I, I think my understanding would be, if this would've been in place, right, they would've been maybe closer, like, where Grace Asian is, like, up to the street, right? There's like, you know, and you would've been able to walk more easily, right, and it kind of would've contained the feel, but like, they're not gonna have to move the building.
Yeah, right.
But, but if they were, if, if the form-based code existed at the time, then it would, yeah, it would be closer to the street, and you'd have more of a streetscape, you know, walking there.
Yeah, pretty much.
All right, does anybody have anything else?
No, I'll get to that.
Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Is there something we should read for next time, or is this just an introduction that we have?
I'll get back to you and give you maybe specific page sections to look at. Yeah, I'll do that, then.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right, old business?
We did receive a resignation this week from a, um, from Jennifer McDonough, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, she says, as much as she hates to step down, her court schedule does tend to get in the way, um, more than is fair to the rest of the members of the commission. Um, she apologizes for having underestimated the possibility of that scheduling conflict in the first place, but she's excited about what the committee is doing and is looking forward to continuing to benefit from the work as a resident.
Uh, discussion?
This would go through the same appointment policy that we have, um, but also just in terms, like, the planning commission has already passed the zoning ordinance, so like, there would be a connection there.
Yes, and we have not, um, we had somewhat anticipated her resignation, so we had not yet advertised the vacancy on market authority, so we'll go ahead and advertise both of those now. Um, and, and do those in one advertisement instead of two.
A book should apply, but if you're interested in the zoning ordinance, they're relevant.
Right. Does anybody have anything else on, on that? All right.
Appreciate Jen's time.
Yeah. We appreciate anybody's time, it is, you know what I mean, and just Jen. Anybody's time that's willing to, you know, give their time and, and sort of run these boards to, to, you know, make people better. And with that, I'll ask Vogel.
Uh, McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. We have a resolution to approve, or approval of Meadville Area Recreation Authority Statement of Revival, we discussed that a little bit last meeting.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing and approving a municipal statement of revival regarding Meadville Area Recreation Authority to revive Meadville Area Recreation Authority for an additional term not exceeding 50 years.
Discussion? Uh, Rocco?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
New business? Just, do you want me to explain? Discussion motion, Heidi Cooper Park final budget and incorporated elements.
So we received, um, the estimate for all of the elements for Heidi Cooper Park that the public had wanted. Ashley Porter is here, who put together those estimates, as well as the design for the park, uh, and Gary can also answer any questions, um, and kind of explain where we're at with the funding process, um, and what the possibilities of moving forward with different elements of the park are.
Am I talking?
Yep.
Okay. So you'll recall, we've gone through the process, we have all of the, um, the elements in, um, and we had talked before about phasing it, phase one, phase two, whatever, wherever the budget came in. You recall the budget for the entire project, we had estimated it being around a million dollars, and Ashley, you know, always brings the good news, came in about 1.3 million. Thanks, Ashley, thanks for that, so... Our concept has been to maybe go after the, what I consider the, you know, the main, the core elements of the park, the biggest ticket items, which would be the basketball court, and you'll have that in front of you, the basketball court, multipurpose court, the two playgrounds, and then the parking, there's three areas of parking. Um, you'll see the revenue, what, what we hope to get from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources of 300,000, uh, generous donation from the YMCA with the hoop for the coop of 2238, three years of community development, block, block grant money, and some money from the stormwater fund that we can use to dedicate towards stormwater-related, um, facilities at the park. If you take out the, the upper parking, you'll see in the upper box, if you take out the upper parking, it comes to about 833,000 dollars. If you see all the revenue there, it comes to 809,500 dollars, um, which basically creates a difference of 23,610 dollars per Ashley's estimate. We do have some extra city capital, um, that we have, that, that other budgets have, or other projects have come in under budget, where we could probably move that if we wanted to. Um, so I guess the concept tonight is, this is how we could get to the core elements, we could get those things built, everything except, except essentially the upper parking. Um, but all the other items, the trail, the community garden, the lower yard area, the disc golf, the cornhole, the barbecue...
Horseshoe.
Horseshoe, restrooms, actually, it would not be in this... What's that?
16 different items.
There were 16 items, this would do about, about maybe a third of them, but these are the big-ticket items. This is a way we could get there realistically with using about, I mean, general fund, I mean, there really wouldn't be much general fund money at all, frankly, in this, it'd be from capital, it'd be from stormwater, and then grants and donations. Mary Ann has been exploring some additional avenue, one additional avenue that may be able to get us through actually the entire park, phase one and phase two, and I can let...
Yep.
Mary Ann talk about it.
Uh, so this funding comes from the local share account, this is issued through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, and it comes from gaming revenue. Um, so the application for this is due March 15th. Uh, we do have our, uh, grant writing consultant working on this. So this would, if council wanted to move forward with trying to do everything, um, we would put in for the additional 500,000 that would be needed to finish the park. This, um, local share account is not, does not require any kind of match, um, but it could not be used to match a DCNR grant, so we would have to use the CDVG funding to match the DCNR grant. So what we'd probably ask is, next week, uh, at the 23rd meeting, have council ratify submission of the, uh, local share account grant.
And then at that same meeting, authorize submission of the DCNR grant, which is due af, is due early April-ish, when we get that in. So it'd be two actions, one ratify, one approve, but both of them would go toward funding, trying to fund the entire park, I mean, everything that was asked for, essentially. So what we need from council tonight is basically a consensus that, two, two consent, consensus eye, is that what? Just follow them tonight. Uh, one, if we, um, to approve going through the core elements and, and going for what we, what we had previously planned, and also blessing the idea of going for that additional state money, and potentially getting all, get the entire park funded. So we'll need consensus on both of those items, so that council's aware of both funding streams that we're looking for. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and this is gonna cost the city...
It would be zero out of the general fund. But there's, again, I mean, we do have...
23,000?
Yeah, it'd be 23 out of capital, it'd be, you know, it's about 70, it'd be about 100,000 in city money between capital and stormwater money. But as far as general fund tax money, it would be zero.
Just a quick question, so if, um... What would we be using this money for if we weren't being, gonna be using it for Heidi Cooper, do you know what I mean, like, what are, what are we taking it away from?
It, it would mainly be the CDVG, um, funding is really what the, I mean, that's where 300,000 of it's coming from, is the CDV, no, it's more than that.
It might be paving.
About 400, something like that.
Potentially some paving, some maybe slum and blight, but...
Slum and, slum and blight's become very difficult use of CDVG funds, it, there's so much red tape surrounding that, so we've actually moved money away from that, um, utilizing it for blight, just because it's too cumbersome to, to use. So it'd probably be mostly from paving that we are, we're taking this.
CDVG's also gone to, like, the housing, the homeless shelters, like, roofs.
That's correct.
And it can go to, to the community development projects, I guess. I, uh, unpopular opinion here, probably, so feel free to push back. I am of the mind, I think, that, um, I feel like what I would wanna see is the, the basic things, right, that are, that are proposed here, that it seems like we can cover, um, to, to be covered and to move. I think we have an opportunity this summer with programming that's, like, actively happening in the park, to like, like, all of the other things are kind of, right, like, smaller expenses, right? There may be things that people would use, maybe they wouldn't, and I don't, like, I really appreciate the, the opportunities we've had for public input, um, but I think we could go even, like, a step further to, like, vet, right? Like, right now, it's kind of like, you get everything on your wish list, even though we can't necessarily afford it, um, and so I would, I think we have an opportunity in front of us to figure out a way, I think the community engagements of committee could even figure out what that looks like, to use the programming this summer that's happening in the park, and other efforts to, like, vet what's, you know, the kind of phase two, right? So phase one are, like, these basic things that I'm seeing, the basketball, multipurpose, playgrounds, parking, and then some of those, like, additional, like, accessory, you know, kind of things, could be, um...
The only thing I'll caution is that the, um, the local share account grant is not an annual kind of grant. It's more of a one-time thing where the state has some extra money that they're opening up for this grant opportunity. Um, so if we don't go for the half a million dollars now, that will not be applicable for when you do vet, so that would have to come from other funding sources, whether that's CDVG money again, whether that's capital money, general fund money, something like that.
Basically, this is analogous to when we approved the, uh, upgrades to the dam in Shady Brook, and we agreed to 500-year plan as opposed to 100, contingent on getting the money in the future. So we're not committing ourselves at this point to doing the extra 500,000 dollars, but we're saying, well, yeah, we get the money, and we, in other words, we have a second chance to go after this.
Correct.
Yeah.
I can, I just put in my two cents on the local share, uh, we're doing a number of those grant applications. That, that program is, is really geared toward community benefit, that's one of the provisions, one of the, one of the missions of the program. And there's a million-dollar limit on that ask, and it's due the 15th, as you mentioned. There's 150 million dollars in that pot this time around, but there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of asks, and most of the asks that we're seeing are pushing toward the million, and, and a sweet spot ask of about a half a million, I think, positions you in that program nicely. And, and it doesn't require any match, there's, there's no harm, no foul, if you don't get the, the mines, so...
So how committed would we be to, like, use the funds exactly in the way that we ask for them, is kind of one question, then second question is, like, could we build in, uh, right, could we phase in an additional opportunity to kind of vet and, and plan the rest of the park?
I mean, you would have to use the funds as you indicated in your grant application. Um, I don't know that there's an opportunity in the grant to have that kind of out, right? I think you need a very specific, 'cause it, that's the only way it strengthens, strengthens your grant application.
Does it have, like, quotes in it?
Yes.
Ashley, how, how vague could we be with park equipment budgeting?
We, we do a large number of grant programs, this is one of the most ambiguous program guidelines out there right now, it doesn't define a lot of, but what we're, what we're seeing mostly is, is, is defined, uh, towards recreation, recreational improvements in Heidi Cooper Park is probably how you would couch the, the scope of the work. Uh, and you, I don't think it's necessary that you would say, "The recreational program will include horseshoe pits specifically," it, it would be for recreation, and you could be relatively broad in that. So, uh, and we see that in emotional... So, and we see that in most programs. It's not unusual that we'll go into a program, we try to make that scope as ambiguous as possible specifically for that reason. So if your, if your question is, I'm not sure that we want to do these specific items, but it would relate to recreation in Heidi Cooper Park, as long as that scope wasn't just grossly different, there's likely some flexibility there.
So in other words, instead of horseshoes, where you have a bocce court?
Correct, yeah. So that, that serves the same purpose, same intent, community benefit, recreation within the park. You have to define where it's at.
Sure. That makes sense. I guess just to like make the intentions clear, I think like I don't want to see us put a lot of money into a park, so many amenities, some of them go unused and we have to maintain, and, and, and they just, right, go to, go to waste and aren't used, aren't, aren't that kind of right thing. So I think if there is wiggle room, I think that that's beneficial, like, I definitely want, I, I want, put it on the record, I want recreation amenities and I want everyone's Heidi Cooper, just like the right ones, right? And I think if we could build-
An example of, of how that flexibility, we believe, will work. We have a project that we're, that we're applying for this, through this program, that we've designed a water storage tank for fire suppression in a building. However, we're still working with the water authority, and we may be able to connect to the water system and provide water for the sprinkler system. So we wrote the scope broad enough that is to serve fire suppression and protection to the building, but not exclusive to a tank or water.
I would like to see, maybe could we take like the upper parking and put that off? And maybe hope that with that, because it was part of the renovation, and maybe the other grant could cover it? So that we wouldn't have to have that difference of the 23, it would be more like seven, or, and the difference?
The, the 23 includes removal of the upper parking?
Okay, yeah, I was thinking, can we not do the upper parking until we do all the parking together later? So that makes sense, like, can we, can, or is that, that has to be done now as, right? Because the upper parking is, is laying out.
I, I think what Gary's saying is they already removed the upper parking, right?
It's, it's in, it's in here, but you'll see in the bold at the bottom of the top box, it says remove that. So the 23 include, already includes the removal of that.
Oh, okay.
It's a little, it is a little confusing. So, yeah, I mean, actually, it's a, that's an excellent point, and that's, that would be the intent, yeah, is to remove that from the phase one, if that's all we're doing.
Yeah, I wonder if there's anything else that could maybe be tripping. So we could get that to zero.
When, when you say this 500,000 dollars we're going to go, this is the grant, we need to do it by, you know, this time, it's everything. It, it's putting back the bathrooms, it's putting back everything in, am I, okay, so, so, but we'll still have to put in this 23,000 dollars, and we'll, so we'll have this plus the 500,000 dollars.
We, we could take out the 23 and add that into the, the 500,000 number.
So we're not actually adding 23 into ours, so, and then the, the, just again, to be clear, the CDVG, right? What we have in here, is, is there something from this grant that we didn't originally have in there? Like, did we add extra CDVG funds now to help cover? Or do you understand what my, I, I may be saying too many words. Do you know what I mean? Like, did we, are we, are we trying to spend more of this, this grant, right? This, it says proposed one, two, do you know what I mean? Is there more in this than there was in the original?
Yeah, there initially was, we were talking two years, not three.
Okay. And is there a way to get away from that? I know that we're going to be giving rid of some of the paving and that type of thing, but is there a way to, you know, I mean, hold some of that CDVG grant for its original use instead of putting it towards this park if we do the 500,000 dollars or?
We never had it really designated to anything prior, maybe some paving work on one street. So it was always intended to be used for Heidi Cooper. That was what the previous council had said, yes, we want to use the CDVG money for this specifically. That's how it was going on.
But just two years instead of, instead of three?
Correct. I mean, and that was what we discussed when we looked at what the actual budget was going to be, how much this park is going to cost. There was never again another intent of, for use of the CDVG funds. It was always geared towards Heidi Cooper.
Okay, but originally, like, so before Heidi Cooper, this grant was supposed to be used for, it's, it's a block grant, right? It's, it was supposed to be used for what?
We would traditionally use it for paving.
Just paving, not, not the blight, not like community, you know, housing and low-income housing and things like that? Like, is that what it originally was for, or?
So we-
Just correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't know.
So we use some of the CDVG funding to do the emergency shelter roof. But traditionally, it's been paving, code enforcement, administrative things. This money likely would have gone to paving projects.
And then just the last question. So, so we paid for an emergency shelter roof, right, like that, that we helped with? If, if we use all of this grant stuff for, for the park, this grant money, and something else, an emergency like that happens again, we won't have like CDVG money, right? Like, to, to help with, with emergency shelter roofs and things like that? I'm just, again, I just am wondering where, where else we would get money?
Traditionally, our CDVG funding has been about 300,000 dollars.
Right.
And that's broken up, you have to have, 18% goes to administrative fees. So 6% of that goes to the county for administration of the grant, and then the city keeps the rest as part of our administration of the grant. Traditionally, 40,000 dollars goes to code enforcement, and then some of that goes to paving or another project, or, you know, a park of something, of some sort. So, and you have to have, when you have the application, those projects tend to be like two years out. There's not something that you can do, like say something happens tomorrow, we could not move funding to that.
I just didn't want us to be using money that could go to, you know, a need base, right? You know, something that, that is super important for the residents here. And, and this park is super important, right? It's, it's a wonderful thing that we're doing here, but, again, I just want to make sure that those grants are, are going towards that if that's what they were designated for.
Would it be permissible use of the grant monies, or could the local match be factored in for security at the park? There's been quite a bit of vandalism there, and I don't know that we have addressed security issues.
We, we don't have budget in, in any cameras or that, that type of thing in the current budget. That could be added, it could be, it could be part of a project, but it's not in the current budget.
Okay.
We had, we had originally estimated 1, 1 million, we, we realistically reached 1.28, 1.3 million, so we're, we're trying not to throw additional stuff in the pot. But that was discussed.
Couldn't camera system be something that had a program or something?
Yeah. It, it does include all new lighting at the court. So, and, and that would cast onto the parking area. So it will, from a security standpoint, there's lighting there now, but it does involve all new lighting.
Thanks.
So I guess we just want to, to let them know if we want to move forward with this grant, right? Like, that's what you're asking?
But the local share account.
Well, and all of it, right?
Right. I, I guess a priority for me in phase one would be restrooms. I don't know how we work that in.
Well, if we go with the grant, that's both phases, that's, restrooms are included, correct?
When do we know about the local share?
About the local share? No one, no. They have not, they haven't put an award period on that. So we don't know how quickly it'll get turned out. It is going to be extremely competitive, as it came up relatively short-term. The application as a single app is, is very short. There's not a lot of material to it, so a lot of people can put in for this money. And we've been, we've been reaching to try to find that, but kind of had a great indication.
I agree with the bathrooms. I think, is there an, an opportunity for us to like move some things around, or is this just like how we have to have it to, to reach these monies and, and reach this?
The problem, and Ashley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the, the main elements are just, they are what they are. They're very expensive and to, to shoot, I guess, to put in, what are the restroom?
The restroom were 40 grand. Thirty-eight thousand dollars. See, the issue with the restrooms, and the, the order that we budgeted these were in the order of priority that people had voted on them.
Right.
So that's how we came with the priority. And some of these things, for example, the restroom is a very good example in that they, they, they aren't accessible, the rooms themselves, and they don't have parking accessibility. So the, the mid-level parking area gets parking close enough to the restroom that once we remodel the restroom, then someone who's parked there can access it. So DCNR would have a real hard time, I think, funding the restrooms in the first phase without that mid-area parking area, because you can't get people to them, even if you made the restrooms accessible. So that, the order of the, of the desire from, from the voting worked out relatively well in how it would be ordered and DCR would, DCNR would fund it as well.
And the restroom has to be accessible, and that's what drives probably some of the cost.
Yeah, yeah, the restroom has to be accessible and the route to the restroom.
Has to be accessible. Are, are there restrooms now? Like, I don't, there are restrooms at this point?
There, there's restrooms in the end of the building, they aren't accessible and are not in serviceable condition.
That's, I guess, that's, I guess, that's what I was asking, can you use them?
No, I had to, we had to unscrew the plywood, literally unscrew it from the door, and then cut the lock off the door to enable to get in. And once we got in, we understood why there was a lock on the door.
Why there was a lock, there was plywood on the door.
I mean, in, in the meantime, we could do, is, we don't like them a whole lot. We could have porta-potties or something brought in for the summers. You know, in the meantime, to have some kind, you know, you're going to want some kind of facility there. So until we get to that point, potentially, we could have that there.
Especially, imagine if they're staffed too, right? Like, if there, there's probably going to need to be kids in restrooms and can't wash. But, yeah, that's a acceptable, right?
The other thing that, if, if you did apply for the local share money and it came through, it would almost be a seamless, no phase one, phase two, it would be one great big phase one. And then DCNR does have an annual ask period for their, for these programs. And I think the reason that 300,000 dollars is entered in that in phase one, because that's where they max out. In order to get that, they're going to give you as much as they give anybody. But next year, in next year's round, the restroom, because it's in the master plan and it's a priority item, that puts it high on the list for the next round of grants. So you could ask next year in their round, it, it ends in April, for the restroom to come in. It's not, this isn't a one and done. There are those funds available in the future.
Right, and it would be, so if we didn't get the, whatever that's called,
Local share?
The mystery share, that we could do phase two, you know, entirely through DCNR again. We would just then have to figure out how we're going to do the local share, because again, it's 50/50, and that's what makes this state funding so invaluable that there is no local share, local match.
What's the, so if we move forward as, as it's laid out with the funding here and the local share, like, what can we expect in terms, I'm sure, I've asked this before, I'm sure, but what can we expect in terms of like the kind of renovation timeline?
Time frame? We would find out about DCNR at the end of this year, roughly. No idea on the other funding, but-
It's scheduled to be before the end of the year. It might, fortunately or unfortunately, Pennsylvania is gambling, so there's a lot of money in this pool. There, there is anticipated that that money will continue, just as, as Marion indicated, doesn't know how it's going to get distributed. So there, the, the idea is to get that money out, is our understanding from the state. So once these rounds, I expect it'll all be in, the awards I expect would all be this year, you know, whether you know or not.
And then the construction season of next of 2023 is when it will look good.
Yeah, later in the year, depending on we get contracts in place, bids out, it's going to be a bigger project. It might be a little, I don't know if it'll take longer on your end, but it's going to be a bigger project, but mid to late summer probably before we get anything underground.
Yes, and, and you, you, you want to wait till you tell us to go ahead and do work, because our costs are covered in the grant as well. So you get that money as part of, and, and they won't pay for it if we do it beforehand. So it's a, it's a safe process, which is, which is rather protracted. So we wouldn't expect the award for this until late the year. Then we have to set up all the meetings with state agencies, that'll happen at the beginning of next year, and then we could, we could move forward into 2023. And then these would be all wrapped into one package.
And depending on how bids come in and everything, we never really know. I mean, with HP Way, it took almost an extra year because we had to bid it. I don't want to promise 2023, but potentially, 2024, I think we should be all very, very comfortable with that.
So to add, add into everything, all of the CDVG money has to be expended by April of 2024?
So we'll spend that first.
Gary, do you need a water?
I'm good.
I have some in my office.
I'm okay, thanks.
And just to be clear on these revenue lines, the, the CDVG what's committed, is that what the comment is? CDVG committed and then two additional years?
Yes.
Is that what that means? Okay.
Yep.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Probably looking for motion or consensus?
We're just consensus, I think, that's what they're looking for?
Go for it.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Can I, I'm sorry, the walkathon is coming up, that money goes towards the program, not the park?
Yeah, okay.
Like 23, I was like 23.
All right, so now we are asking for a, asking for a consensus to move forward with with nondiscrimination, you know, resolution, planning or ordinance, correct? I'm sorry? Yeah, I've got, I've got nondiscrimination consensus, right?
Correct.
So what, what?
Thank you.
Thank you. I think what, what we're doing is just having a very quick, very quick discussion, and not really a discussion, just, just that we're, we want to move forward with some sort of plan or resolution ordinance, and this is what we're going to start looking into. Nondiscrimination, okay, we're going to start getting people coming in, and we're going to, we're going to start looking into and having staff look into.
So this was identified as a priority for council. So what the ask is, is do you want us as staff to start moving forward, looking into a policy or some sort of resolution to address some nondiscrimination policies? And that's what we're looking for from council, just a consensus on whether you want staff to start looking into what those options may be.
Can I say this?
Sorry, go ahead. Yeah, no, I, um, you can say what you think. We're, we're, you know, it's, this is something that we, we will be discussing. We're not, you know, going to get too detailed tonight, because we're, we're not informed enough, right? So, absolutely, sorry. No, no, go ahead. It's like a, just like an, an opening, right? Like, that we're, we have a consensus that this is a priority, and this is what we're, we're going to move forward it with, and that, that's basically all that's, that's happening tonight, but absolutely.
Love a good opening. Yeah, well, no one vetoed it when it came up as council priority, so I imagine we're moving forward. I did just want to say the Community Engagement Subcommittee, me and Gretchen of council with Renna, met, so the nondiscrimination ordinance and the Climate Action Plan, as well as participatory budgeting around the American Rescue Plan of Funds were the kind of three priorities that fell to our committee. My understanding of like, kind of delegating, right, some of these priorities was that the committees would maybe work out like how it makes sense to kind of sequence some of these priorities and what makes sense in terms of timing. When did we meet? Monday? Monday, we kind of talked about the Climate Action Plan and the nondiscrimination ordinance as being similar, like lifts, right? Right now, the way they're being proposed is that they would both like create a body, and that is like a similar task. And because, I think what we can, correct me here, I'm getting anything wrong. I think what we can do is that because like, there's a task force, citizens that are moving the Climate Action Plan forward, that like we were hoping to focus on that and get that through, or at least to council. And then, and then shift our focus to the nondiscrimination ordinance maybe later in the year, like summer, fall, right? Or, or the second half of the year. So kind of sequencing out those things that take a similar kind of effort. So that's, that's the thinking of that committee, is that we would look at both, but we would just take one at a time, because they are similar, similar, yeah, I mean, it's a lot for, it's a lot for all of us. And, and frankly, like, the nondiscrimination ordinance, like, the leadership from citizens isn't there in the same way that it is for the Climate Action Plan. And so if folks want to see that happen, I encourage you to, to reach out and, and we can get that moving. But otherwise, like, if it's just the committee, I think, like, you don't have the bandwidth to do both right now, and we would wait. Is that, so I will let council speak to that, but that's kind of where the committee was coming from, right?
So there, there are some other options, and I, I think that if, if staff will move for, obviously, you know, with everything that you're saying, we're going to move- With everything that you're saying, we're going to move, we're going to move forward, but there are some other things that that possibly we could research and and do. That maybe wouldn't form a lot and do some things like that, and that's what what is is being asked right now is do we want staff to at least look into it, right? And some of the other things that we can do, i.e. a resolution, i.e. a. Or or policy. There are also those options, right, that that we may be able to look into and that's that's all. Yes, we want to see what those are, yes, we want to do that. And basically, that's it, nicest information, right? We're moving forward with the climate action, that is your first priority, absolutely. But there since there are other options, we want staff to look into that.
I would say not right now, but that's just my hope. I would just say I don't have the bandwidth to think about the zoning ordinance, participatory budgeting and right, all of the things that are on our plates and I can't imagine that you do. Like I I I don't know how many hours you were, I don't even know how many hours you worked. So so I would say I would say that we take a more like concentrated look at at all of the options later in the year. Around the non discrimination ordinance is is what I would say again, but I will. I've been talking a lot on this and I will pause and let other people weigh in on this.
Right.
That's mine.
And and my stance, I just want to know more about it, right, like what our options are. And that's that's where I sit with with that, not moving forward, but knowing what our options are, right? And what else there is out there, right, like. So consensus.
Is she saying it would be added pressure on you guys if even if they looked into what our options are, is that what I'm understanding?
Um, it's not pressure, I mean, it's just like honestly, I honestly, I kind of just want to like focus on like one thing at a time or. An a reasonable number of things at a time and like also recognize that it adds.
I understand, I think it would be great if we got the information because over time we could look at it and come up with questions or ideas or thoughts. We're not acting on it, again, it's just them gathering information for us to to go over, I think it's a good idea.
So I think our concern is honestly because our because our staff are forty, they just said, what is their day? And how much weight are we going to give that so that they can come into work happy and not feel like, oh, my God, it's another thing. So I think as long as I I don't know, in in a sense, I feel like I would defer to to staff so that we are not overburdening staff. That that's how I feel about it. Again, maybe in our spare time, we can not, yeah, I would be willing to do research, but to ask staff, I think is a big ask.
So to give you context, what it would look like probably moving forward is this is what a policy, example policy would look like, this is what an example resolution would look like. That is what you probably would expect to see moving forward when you ask us to research things. So just for a little context on what that would look like.
What will this accomplish that the state human relations commission doesn't accomplish? Because our human relations commission is even more stringent than federal. And in Pennsylvania, at least, the H R C is authorized to enforce federal law and additional state law. So we have a rather stringent state law. What do we think this will accomplish that state law doesn't already do?
So besides like like us taking like an actual stance, is is that what you're asking?
No, I'm saying what what would an ordinance do that state law already doesn't do? And again, forum, would this be more appropriate like Erie does theirs at the county level? Would this be more appropriate for something to be at Crawford County? Otherwise, you have an ordinance for this eight square mile piece of land out of a thousand thirty two square miles in Crawford County. And we have different different levels of enforcement.
I I guess I think that maybe knowing what a resolution, the difference between a resolution, a policy and an ordinance, right? Like is that that's kind of what we're asking. And that's just us taking a stance and again. I totally dig with the the body, how long that takes, right, like that's that's what we were talking about. I just want to know the difference between the resolution and the the. I don't know why I can't say policy one. Jeez, like if if we took, we made a policy, right, or we made a resolution, right? We're taking a stand, right, and we are, you know, letting the needle know, right, and and our population know where we stand and and that we are resources. For this, if we do an ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, it would be us creating a body and and doing a lot more stuff, right, which would take a lot more work. Again, we that we don't want to put on staff, which in context for everybody that doesn't know, when we say staff, it is not fifteen people, it's not twenty five people, it is three people, right? And that's why we do not want to burden our staff, that every staff member is here, right? When we say staff, it's Katie, it's Gary, it's Mary Ann, so so there's not fifteen or twenty people in the back. That's why we're having this discussion and and not overburdening people because. Everybody here works very hard, I think I've said that before, they the people who work for the city work very hard and they work for our city, for the betterment of our city. And we do not want them to hate their jobs, we do not want them to not want to be here, we don't want them to have to take forty five mental health days because we're making them do a million things, right? So so that's the context, right? Do we offer a trial? Right, right, and that's the that's we're trying to try to normalize mental health days, right, like when we need that. So that that's what that's what this discussion is about, right? And it and that's why it's so important to get the consensus from staff. And when we say staff, for people to know that it is not every single person that works for the city here. It's not, it's these three people and and the addition of some help.
I think the clarifying point is like there there is more staff, but like their work is the day to day.
Right.
So the work that can move with the focus of council is only.
Staff is for the public.
So if it's a staff capacity concern, I will tell you, a policy or a resolution is much more obtainable for us at this moment. Than any kind of ordinance or the creation of any kind of commission.
Just to orientate you because you've some of you have asked different questions, right? So when when we talk about the options, right, and to Mary Ann's point. If council, what we've heard you say individually is that you want to take a public stand to evidence your. Very strong feelings that the city of Meadville needs to be an inclusive, right, community? That we don't tolerate as a community discrimination when it comes to housing or employment, right, that we are L G B T Q friendly. And those are the comments that I've heard from you. There are different ways that a municipality can evidence that intent. A a relatively quicker way when we're talking about staff capacity would be to pass a resolution indicating. Your support, right, of of those sentiments and perhaps including in it adoption of a policy where. We as a city take some steps to connect people with resources that already exist at the state level, such as the P H R C. Which is the enforcement body in Pennsylvania, they have trained professionals in Pittsburgh, I've appeared before them a number of times. And their sole job is to enforce laws, right, that protects citizens. And they advocate for citizens, it all it takes is a phone call, someone doesn't have to spend money to hire an attorney. They investigate claims, they mediate claims involving housing and employers. And then they have hearings if necessary and then they enforce the laws, right? So fines are levied in the cases where someone is found culpable of discrimination. So that process, to your point, exists, Jim, already at the state level, but the the city could help connect people because many people might not know, right? When you say P H R C, a lot of people don't know that that exists. So we could do that very easily and accomplish that to to the point of having so many things to do, that's one road. A much more complicated road is when people talk of what a non discrimination ordinance is, really it's setting up a body like the P H R C in your community. Erie County has one, it's staffed, I think they spend how much per year?
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
To staff that organization. Now, that is a quasi judicial body, not to get too deep into this, but what I mean by that is is that body acts as the investigator, right? So the police officer, the judge and the jury, okay, there it's comprised of volunteers. Where that gets very complicated is you're now appointing volunteers to a board that's going to receive complaints from hearing members. And they're going to investigate, issue subpoenas, potentially have hearings. It's a lot of work, just the law is thirty seven pages long. I can tell you, the city of Meadville does not have a thirty seven page law, right, on its books right now. That would take us this year to accomplish well and to especially train the people who would be sitting on that commission, right? So that they do it well, right, because most regular people don't know the elements of, say, an A D A claim, right, or an employment discrimination claim, so it's complicated. That doesn't mean you shouldn't do it if you choose to, but you would have to choose to do it well, to fund it, right? It would definitely require a person to organize that, an additional staff person, in my opinion, because your existing staff doesn't have capacity. So that's a longer road, so just to orientate you to that, so your point, Jim, yes, that that process exists at a state level. So I think you're at a crossroads where if you're interested in doing that, that would be okay, let's put that on the long term agenda, perhaps put the climate plan in front of it, right? And just plan on then we're going to attack that if that's a priority for council.
So if if we had a commission. And someone takes issue with a ruling, we have just opened the city up to a lawsuit.
It would get appealed to the court of common pleas typically.
Right.
The issue is that it's you would have a a body of volunteers doing things like issuing subpoenas, investigating complaints, holding public hearings. Again, involving a citizen and pick any business in the city or any other person that gets complained of, right? Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't situations where complaints should be brought, but that agency already exists at the state level. So you would be creating a volunteer board that would be sitting in judgment. On companies and other individuals in the community. That doesn't mean it's bad, it just means it's complicated, right? That that's one not to be taken lightly if we create that body, so we just have to make sure we did it right. And that's why it usually happens oftentimes at a county level like in Erie, where they have the resources, they have a person that they dedicate to making sure that's very organized.
And just for some context, so as a county, Erie County, they handle about twenty complaints a year. And only one to two of those go to a hearing and they're still spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to run this commission. So that's also something to keep keep in mind to of how much you're going to spend and again, up on the county level in Erie County.
Yeah, and I'm my intent is not to talk you out of it, especially if it if that is a priority. I like that you're acknowledging that we can't do them both at the same time, right, effectively. I don't I don't I agree with you that both council and staff would be burdened by initiatives that big simultaneously. So I do appreciate that if you pick one, pick one. And if you do want to go and try to tackle both, we might be able to accomplish your objectives of of taking a strong statement by adopting a policy and connecting citizens. Or you might say, no, we actually want to form that commission. And that's the direction staff was looking for tonight, is where should we be spending our time?
I know that you're just said that you're not trying to talk us out of anything, but I I I'm feeling like we are being steered, I will just say that, in a particular direction. You're a solicitor, so that's fine, and you're allowed to. I don't know, I guess I'm also feeling like I I sincerely do feel like I'm in a place where I want to balance. Like making reasonable reasonable asks of limited staff and also like being accountable to what people need and want in our community, right? And that sometimes feels like a balance, to me, that's why I wanted to sequence these things to give. To give what I feel like are two really important, you know, like issues, like the weight that they deserve and like the 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 research and like thorough investigation they deserve. I I thought that that's what the subcommittees were kind of set up to to do is to kind of like pace out, prioritize and dig in like on behalf of council so that we could like divide that work up. So I was under the impression, right, that that's kind of the charge that we had and that we can maybe like bring back some of those recommendations to the rest of council about when we're going to pace some stuff out. And I I think that I need a little more time to like think about ordinance for like, I don't I don't know that I'm ready tonight to like. Guide guide in one direction or another.
So you need some more information, you need.
I don't know, I don't know that I need information, I think I just need time to process and maybe maybe it is information, but I think it's information I can gather and share in terms of like. What it could look like to sequence, right? If 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 priority one for council is we want to take a stand, then we can do that with with just a policy. And 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 what does it look like, right, to still look at an ordinance if we want one, right? Or what is the process to decide if if that is what we want or not? I think I need time to like wrap my head around that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think the policies, not, yeah, doing the resolution and the policy, if it's like an easy thing, would it help me get to like work through all of that and the pacing? Like to me, it seems like steps to go closer.
Well, and and we have the option of tabling this until next meeting, right? Like we can we can do that and and we can re discuss and then ask staff to to move forward then or not, right? Like. Is that the consensus that we're looking at, tabling this and?
No, I mean, I understand, so I'm I'm my thought is again, is if they're going to gather information, we could get, they could gather information. On the policy, whatever, whatever, both things that we want to do, if it's not, again, time consuming, which from what Mary Ann said, it doesn't sound like it's really that time consuming. That way we can at least study it, review it and and make a more informed decision.
What's there is, I'm sorry, what's there must be a policy and a resolution?
We would pass a resolution adopting a policy. The resolution is your action that you vote on, it would just be adopting a a policy or a protocol of what what you might like. And the only reason it's on the agenda is because council said it was a priority, so we do, the discussion's happening because council said it was a priority. You all can say, we're not ready to talk about it, or you would like us to research it, either way is fine.
So consensus is is what, how how are you feeling, Gretchen?
I would like I would like to to see the research and so that we can have a. Nice conversation next time and maybe it'll be a stepping stone to something else.
Can you, I'm sorry, what is the research, like what are we asking?
I just I just wanted, I want to, I would like to see like maybe look into other communities that have have a strong resolution, a good policy. That, you know, that is, you know, hopefully engaging people in their community. And and then like I I honestly don't really completely know like the needs of our community, so I do feel like any information will help.
Yeah.
We're obviously not ready to do anything tonight.
So you you're feeling like tabling and and we'll discuss later. Then that that's acceptable, that's fine, autumn is needs time, we can look into some things ourselves and so we'll table this for the next. Or the next step.
And I think if it's if it's okay, like can can we can the community engagement committee wrap our heads around what the options are and maybe do the next steps and. Share that with the rest of council and we'll we'll kind of think about what it looks like to to move. This is helpful for me, right, because this, I think the distinctions between ordinance versus policies and what it could look like potentially to face those or something is is good. But this gives us, I think, some sense of the priorities of the rest of council. Which is helpful. Okay, so we're going to table that. Sorry.
No, no.
Related, I don't know when to bring this up, but like relatedly, there were requests coming out of the community engagement committee in terms of like. Timing for the climate action plan conversations, I don't know when to ask those, can we talk about them?
So the climate action plan is going before the city's planning commission tomorrow. I think maybe Gary tomorrow at the you can give a timeframe of how long it'll anticipate being in the.
I anticipate one to two meetings, I'm guessing, I'm not sure how much, I I honestly have no idea how many, I I have questions my own, I assume other, I assume commission members will too. I'd I'd anticipate one to two meetings, so probably May might be a good time for it to come to council. I'm thinking that they would vote it out potentially in April.
Okay, okay. That is fine. We were hoping that maybe once it passes planning commission, maybe the maybe a study session of council could be a presentation from the climate action, from folks on the plan.
We can discuss that after it comes out of the the planning commission, it's on on the agenda tonight, so. We can talk about that.
Can we, sorry. Can we have on the agenda like the subcommittees so that we can have a chance to like report out or something if we have?
We would still have to put specifically what we're talking about on the agenda.
Like when I had when I had like the beautification committee and like had a report.
So I mean, we can list the subcommittees as priorities.
Yeah, 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 just the subcommittees.
Thank you. All right, I'm done, all right, consensus to move forward with. Ordinance ordinance discussion motion, tax exempt status audit.
This was also one of council's identified priorities, so this is an audit to ensure properties which claim a tax exempt status are truly tax exempt. This proposal that you have in front of you. This proposal that you have in front of you is from Weiss, Burkhardt, Kramer, which conducted a similar audit 25-ish years ago for the city. This is the initial scope of work, which includes obtaining the tax assessment rules for taxable and exempt properties, and conducting a review of those parcels to determine whether any tax-owners should be paying taxes. The cost of this work is estimated to be about $3,500, plus expenses. Expenses include things like obtaining records and mailings. So, what we are asking for is just a motion to move forward with engaging West Burkhardt and Kramer in an audit.
I support this. Several times I've brought up Mr. Weiss's name. There was no guarantee that we're going to get any additional revenues. The guarantee is, if we don't do something, we have no chance of gaining additional revenues.
Jim, what was the kind of return on investment the last time?
I don't recall, because I was just, I think it was just before I was on council last time. But I know it was successful because we were happy with the work that he had done. And we got a fairly good education on what's exempt, what isn't exempt, and given a few terms, which none of us ever knew existed in relation to, for example, how much extra space a church could have as an exemption. I think it's called the glebe. And that has to do with sunlight and air. So, it was instructive, and it was productive.
Do we, it was, I'm sorry, it was like 30?
$3,500.
$3,500. We just pulled that from general fund or special projects, or what is the?
Couple of different options. You could have special projects to the council budget. We also have some special legal services that we budgeted for these type of things, so either one of those.
I'm for it.
Would you like a motion? I would say move.
Well, it's just a consensus, right, to move forward with?
I would do that by motion.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
So, move.
I second. All right. Discussion? Rocco?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Sorry, in my thing, it says consensus, so that's why I'm, that's what you're asking for.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. I'm sorry, we should, I should have asked this before we voted. Is it anticipated that this will take a lot of staff time? Like, is the, like, work on your end much, or is it just?
I don't think there's going to be a lot of staff time. If county has good records, is what Ira told me. Hoping they do now.
I think they've updated. All right, great. Okay, so, forward with the audit. Oh, okay. Ask for consensus to move forward for cleanup day?
So, every year, the city does a cleanup day. We would propose scheduling this for Saturday, May 14th, from 8:00 to noon.
And is that, do you want to motion, or is that, because it says just a consensus to move forward?
Consensus is fine.
Okay. I looked at May 14th, it looks good for me, so.
Always a second Saturday for a reason?
Public Works had requested this day, so we went with what was best for them, since they are doing all the work.
So, it's on Mother's Day weekend, and it's after the Kentucky Derby, so the timing is good.
The Kentucky Derby has scheduling implications.
Or are you thinking that it's, what's second Saturday? Is that what you're thinking? Is that going to be the first second Saturday?
It will be. I don't know that it is an issue. I don't think many people schedule their lives around it in the same way that maybe I do, but, no.
Okay.
No, I think if Public Works requested it, that sounds good to know.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. So, I'm for it, and Jim's obviously for it.
I'm for it.
Larry?
Larry? No. I knew Jim was for it.
I know your name.
So, that's that. Resolution, authorized signatures, update emergency operations plan.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meaville approving and adopting an updated emergency operations plan for the city of Meaville.
Can I get a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Discussion?
So, this is just updating to reflect staffing changes, there's no changes to the actual language in the emergency operations plan.
Is this plan publicly accessible, or is it just like this internal staff document?
We can put this on the website.
I don't know that that's a request, I'm just asking.
We can put it down on the website, it's not currently on there.
Anybody have any other questions? All right, Rocco?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Resolution, ratify action, Co-Stars' salt participation agreement?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meaville ratifying the action taken by Public Works Support Coordinator, Janie Smith, to enter into the attached salt contract participation agreement via the Pennsylvania Department of General Services Co-Stars program.
Motion?
One second.
What you're making? I thought you were asking for one. I was like, Larry, you're making a motion.
We share.
Discussion?
So, this is just an annual purchase agreement, we're actually purchasing salt or agreeing to purchase salt through the state for the 2022-2023 season. This is the most reasonable cost that we get. For example, this year, the price per ton was $49. We won't know the price of the salt contract until later on, probably August of this year.
Does anybody have any questions?
We're purchasing this with, along with other township or something, isn't that the way, as a bulk or something of that nature, so we get this deal?
Yes, sort of, but not, I don't know in the way you're thinking. So, this is, the state takes orders from every municipality and county, and then they bid it out, so they get the best deal because they're bidding out with so many municipalities.
It's kind of like, we buy our police cars through the state as opposed to doing individual bids, because it's more cost-effective.
Correct. Any other questions? Rocco?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Councilmember statements? Jim, do you want to start us off?
Thank you. John and Shane called yesterday from Benning and Satherood, and they got the commitment and locked in the rate. The rate we projected to be 2.47%, is going to be 2.34%, which means that the taxpayers are going to save roughly another $53,000 over the life of the loan. Closing is scheduled for March 25th, and I believe everything will be paid directly into the pension fund. Tim, have I?
That's correct, all of it. Good job, Tim.
So, that's some good news, and the basis points went up higher today, so it's a good thing we did it yesterday.
Gretchen?
I don't have anything. Larry?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll just kind of report from the Community Engagement Subcommittee. We met, like I said, on Monday. We are, like, starting the kind of long process of kind of planning out what a participatory budgeting process around the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we have could look like, and we'll be sure to bring that back to work out with staff and then bring back to council and keep posted. But that's kind of a long-term, long-term thing that we're working on. We, like I said, are kind of prioritizing, I mean, like I said, the Climate Action Plan, there's a task force that's kind of a Subcommittee of Planning Commission that's really driving the boat there, but we will support them. I do believe that there's a public celebration on the 15th that evening that the task force is holding, and, yeah, the committee decided we would work to move that along. And, yeah, and I'll underscore what I said earlier about the nondiscrimination ordinance, right? Again, it was kind of, we were, part of the analysis was like, where is their energy right now? And so, I think if folks do feel energy and feel called to help move the nondiscrimination policy, resolution, ordinance, whatever it might be in a particular way, I would ask you to reach out to Gretchen and I, or Janie as an alternate on that Community Engagement Committee. And that will help us to kind of make the decision about where we focus our efforts and when, at least it'll help me. And, yeah, the Girl Scouts game, that was really cute and fun. They voted on what they want to see in Heidi Cooper Park, these are the results, so that's what that is. It was a very fun exercise in democracy. I've got a similar request from some Boy Scouts, so apparently I'm the one, so, send your, yeah, I guess that's what I signed up for, I don't know. So, send your scouts who need their democracy badge my way. But no, it was really great to connect with them. I love that there was a little question to Gary, you know, that was a good time, so, thanks to, thanks to the troops for coming out, and their troop leader for, that was a great idea, so happy to have them. I'm done.
Okay. I would just like to thank everybody that goes onto these boards, and I think everybody should appreciate the time that volunteers put in to help Meaville move, right, and help Meaville move forward, and to bring us together and to get these things done. It is volunteer time. I appreciate Jen McDonough, I was going to say McDonough, and her understanding of her own ability, you know, and her time or strengths, and I think she was probably doing really good work in that she volunteered in the first place, you know, giving up her own time. I'd also like to thank the people who work here in Meaville, we had some Burke's Ball, and Meaville worked seamlessly, quickly, and it was, it was kind of a sight to see how flawless things can, things can go, right? Like, there's, you know, bad situations, we've got the best-case scenario, and the people who work in Meaville, they worked, man, quickly, efficiently, and made sure that everything ran smoothly. And I was there, and I saw it, and it, I just think we should appreciate everyone that's here that makes Meaville move, and that's the firemen, the policemen, you know, the Public Works, the streets, you know, all of that. It was definitely a cool thing to see and to be able to be a part of, so I think we should appreciate that. And as far as everybody on council, again, the subcommittees are working, you know, extra hours, and we're having extra meetings, trying to get through this stuff, and although we overlap sometimes, right, I think that all of us here put inclusiveness in our resonance first. It's just all about scheduling and making sure that the people who work here are happy and, well, are, it's not overburdened. We'll say overburdened, right? So, I think everybody in the community should appreciate them and everything that, again, the people who work here work for. So, that's the end of my statement, and I'm going to...
Mayor, let me ask a question, because you brought the issue up. If Chelsa Street is still closed, should we contact the St. Patrick's Parade Committee because they're going to have to reroute?
We already have.
Already have, wonderful.
Oh, Katie, they are just, they're on it, man, they're, they're on it. So, that just goes to prove it, right? So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All right, meeting's adjourned.
I wish it was.